Okay, welcome everybody to the Town Council's special meeting for Monday, August 26th, 2024. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get the roll call, please?
Rita Batino. Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Janet Fons.
Here.
Oh, thank you.
No, that was.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton here. Kimberly Norton here. Hillary Orman here. Christina Ross here. Eric Toonam.
Here.
And Young.
Here.
Allisonus.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Item number two on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their names, street address, and comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Do we have anybody who wants to make a public comment? Doesn't look like there's anybody in Zoom room and no one on Zoom. Okay, we'll move forward to item agenda number three, Plan of Conservation and Development, P O C D. Review and discussion of the proposed 2024 Plan of Conservation and Development draft. Please take the stand. Did you want to make a public comment? You're absolutely entitled. Well, please sit down anyway, guys. It's all right. Please stand over there, give your name, street address, and.
Uh. My name is Sasha Demetris. I live at 48 Summer Street, Unit B. First, I'd just like to generally express my support. I think it was really professionally done. I think it's an important issue, and I think, you know, it was, I'm really happy how well-developed it is. One comment on a specific item is the telecommunications issue. I, reading it and getting some feedback from the members who've written it, it seems like the primary path forward was to look into technical innovations in the space that could make this development easier. But unfortunately, we're not in a good place for that to be the case. On one side, we have physics and development of telecommunications technology is in high-frequency, short-bandwidth communication for cities. That's the opposite of what we're looking for, and that's what the market demands. So it's not only that the solution isn't there today, it's that the whole market for this kind of technology is moving in the wrong direction for us to wait on innovation to solve this problem. There is things like microcellular, pico cellular technologies that have more towers, but I think that's even going to be a bigger challenge as zoning 20 towers that are smaller rather than two larger towers seems to be a step in the wrong direction. So I would say overall, it's really great, but the strategy to look into new technologies to solve our telecommunications issue doesn't seem like a promising path forward.
Thank you. I appreciate you stepping up and expressing your comments. We certainly want as much participation from the community as possible, and welcome all input, and we have. So we have the Utilities Commission. It would be lovely for you to participate in their meetings, and I'm sure they'd be happy to receive your input. So thank you very much for stepping up. Okay. Gentlemen. Just a few, a brief comment just about logistics for this evening's discussion. As I understand it, we're, have the privilege of getting an opening statement, which will be is welcomed for sure, to kind of frame out how we discuss this topic. As usual, I'd like to keep things tight. You know, our questions, let's keep them sharp and focused. We want to avoid having kind of a discursive discussion that kind of rambles on. Let's, let's ask questions, let's get answers, let's follow up, and let's be sharp and precise, and no offense to planning and zoning, but we don't, we don't have five hours, six, seven-hour meetings. So, so with that said, I'll hand it off to you.
Chairman Morrow and members of the Town Council of New Canaan. I am John Criss, Planning and Zoning Commissioner and Chairman of the Commission's Plan of Conservation Development Subcommittee, which was established by the Commission to focus attention on New Canaan State-mandated decennial update of its P O C D and do that heavy lifting. With me are Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman Daniel Radman and Sarah Carey, who so capably heads New Canaan's Planning and Zoning Department. We are joined by Robert Collins of S L R, the consultancy. We have engaged to assist us in this important effort. Some background and context, the P O C D is a living document. It's a guide for municipality over a 10-year period as continually considers its priorities. It is mandated by state statute, and New Canaan would lose its qualification for many state grants if we failed to update our P O C D in a timely manner. This P O C D has been designed to collect and recognize community feedback related to conservation development matters and recommend goals and strategies to address them. It is also meant to advise the Planning and Zoning Commission on how to evaluate applications and potentially amend its zoning regulations. No town body will be required to implement a single item of this P O C D. It is not a dictat. That said, the clear purpose of this intensive, inclusive, and comprehensive year-long community engagement process is to gain general consensus from our community about goals and strategies New Canaan should consider pursuing. The actions noted, and many are broad, because we're required to look up to 10 years in the future and make educated insights as to what might make sense for New Canaan in 2032 or 2033. Please note that the P O C D's purpose is not to estimate costs of implementing suggested actions. Those responsibilities lie elsewhere. And nearly half of the P O C D's goals relate to potential zoning regulation updates. More on this in a moment. From the start, our goal was to have an active, open, and comprehensive community input, benefiting from the collective wisdom of our fellow residents. It is what New Canaan rightly demands and deserves. We believe these goals have been achieved. We started with a very detailed community survey. Now, a 4% response rate in these surveys is seen as, is really good. We had over 11%. Unheard of. It was also a well-attended kickoff community gathering, followed by three lively and targeted community discussions on our downtown, on housing, and on environmental historical preservation. We then hosted a final community gathering as we prepared this draft and held another survey. Many of the goals, strategies, and actions in the P O C D come directly from townspeople, to name a few. Consideration of a gas-powered equipment usage ordinance, desire for more cultural facilities in downtown, and using existing town facilities for cultural events, expanding New Canaan's treasured historic district, desire for better parking signage and information online, and exploring creative methods to improve cell coverage. Other goals, strategies, and actions were suggested either by town staff, our consultant S L R, or members of the P O C D Subcommittee. They were created as concerns that were identified in the community survey and other community input, supported by analysis of relevant demographic data. I want to emphasize that this P O C D is New Canaan's plan, built right here. The culmination of our collective efforts to identify vital issues in New Canaan, meet the state P O C D statutes mandates, and propose wise actions. The Planning and Zoning Commission, under the leadership of Chairman Daniel Radman, plans to conduct a comprehensive review and update of New Canaan zoning regulations following the adoption of this P O C D. These regulations have not been comprehensively reviewed for about 20 years. Note again that nearly half of the action items in the P O C D will be evaluated and addressed through zoning regulation updates. This vital process will ensure our regulations are consistent with new state case law, that development patterns that have emerged from the regulations are consistent with the desires of our community. This process will also confirm that there are no weaknesses or gaps in the regulations and that they are internally consistent, and that, and ensure that the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval processes are as fair and straightforward as possible for residents and businesses. New Canaan zoning regulations play a key part in ensuring that our town continues to feel like the small, welcoming New England village that has attracted so many residents. Failure to periodically review these zoning regulations is a detriment to the town and impedes our collective capacity to evolve in a cohesive and desirable manner. A comprehensive review and update of our zoning regulations will involve many, 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 many public hearings. Residents will be notified in similar manners as to how they were notified about our successful P O C D community workshops. The Planning and Zoning Commission absolutely wants this to be an open and transparent process. It is unclear how long this zoning regulation update will take, because it depends on a more comprehensive review of the regulations to determine how much needs to be updated. For reference, the last comprehensive update took about two years. From 2003 to 2005, and then was updated throughout 2006 as more issues were found, and finalized in 2007. It is going to be a lot of work, but it is our duty as a Planning and Zoning Commission to continually do our best for New Canaan. Some Town Council members asked about the proposed Transit-Oriented Development, or T O D, idea noted in the future land use plan. T O Ds are common zoning, are a common zoning tool utilized around transit infrastructure to create intentional development. Its inclusion in the plan is merely a recommendation that the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider when it updates its zoning regulations, to determine whether this zoning tool would be useful for New Canaan. A Transit-Oriented Development Plan could be created near the downtown Metro North Station. In this example, let's say Pine and Grove Streets. Property owners could choose to rezone to the T O D rules, which would have a set of guidelines to promote mixed-use development in a cohesive architectural style that differs from but is complementary to other areas of downtown. We have yet to receive negative comments from the public about this suggestion. And again, its inclusion in the P O C D is meant to serve as a recommendation for the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider as we begin to evaluate the zoning regulations. There are also questions about the P O C D's recommendations for reevaluating permitted housing densities downtown and exploring innovative housing solutions. State statute mandates that we evaluate the desired population densities around town as part of the P O C D. These action steps are items that the Planning and Zoning Commission will likely consider when performing its comprehensive review of the zoning regulations to ensure that our regulations support the proper types of housing that New Canaan has requested. These are not done deals, they're items to evaluate. One example is our retail A-zone, which is Elm Street and portions of South Avenue and portions of Main Street. We currently allow residences on the second floor of retail A. However, these units may only have one bedroom and may no, and be no larger than 750 square feet. This is neither family-friendly nor senior-friendly. P O C D recommends that we revisit regulations like this to ensure we are promoting potential future development that works for all of our community. The state also provides incentives to municipalities that permit density in ways that could be beneficial to the town. For example, the recently adopted H B 5474 says that municipalities can receive points towards securing an 830G moratorium or renewal for market-rate units, market-rate units that are part of so-called middle housing developments. Who's in favor of points, anyone? Not a trick question. Some people are not in favor of points, okay? I didn't see hands up, okay? Middle housing is defined as developments with three to five units in a property. Should New Canaan wish to take part in this opportunity to generate moratorium points without necessitating expensive subsidized housing to be constructed, the zoning regulations would need to be amended. Comprehensive public engagements would, of course, be undertaken to determine where permitting such developments is appropriate. Please note that the goal of the housing portion of the P O C D is not to change the way New Canaan looks, but rather to evaluate how we can better utilize the structures that already exist in town and how to properly manage any new construction that is proposed. Per the town attorney, any future zoning regulation updates must be consistent with the P O C D. Thus, if a potential regulation is found to be inconsistent, there's no legal basis for adoption. Chairman Morrow, it is hoped that this summary addresses many of the Town Council's questions. As stated, we welcome public input into our P O C D process, which is reaching a conclusion. We look forward to the public comment session the Town Council has scheduled for early in September. The Town, the P O C D Subcommittee is proud of this document, and we thank the people of New Canaan for sharing their wisdom with us so very generously. It is a privilege to serve the people of New Canaan. Chairman Dan Radman of the Planning and Zoning Commission has some comments, and then we would like to open up to questions from the Town Council.
Please, thank you.
Is there a chance that we could get a copy of your statement?
Yeah, I have some notes on this one.
Oh, I just, yeah, if you have it electronically, and maybe Tucker, we can get it onto our tablets or something, that would be really helpful, just to have that perspective.
Sure. Chairman, everyone. Dan Rad. One of the items specifically that was.
Sorry, my bad. One of the items that was specifically raised in some of the feedback and questions that came back is whether or not we use the appropriate section of the state mandate for municipal P O C D crafting. There were, I ended up speaking to the, a gentleman up in Hartford who was very helpful in clarifying and reinforcing and confirming that what we have done in the statute and the regulations that we have followed are the accurate ones for crafting this particular P O C D. There are two. One is Chapter 297, it's called Connecticut's Development and Future, Title 16A. That is the state P O C D, and that is a much broader, higher level, 40,000-foot level for the state in terms of crafting its future goals with a lot of subcategories that go in, or subchapters that go into that. Municipalities specifically have to follow Chapter 126 of Municipal Planning Commissions, Section 823. And that one, because there were many questions of why did we include certain chapters, why were there, you know, certain components and, and topics raised within the P O C draft that we've created, I'd just like to read to you a paragraph from that regulation. "In preparing such plan, the Commission and any special committee shall," not "may" or "could" or "might not," "shall consider the following," and then these are 11 different, 12 different topics. "Community Development Action Plan of the municipality, if any." Number two, "the need for affordable housing," shall include that. Number three, "the need for protection of existing and potential public surface and ground-drinking water supplies." Number four, "the use of cluster development and other development patterns, to the extent consistent with soil types, terrain, and infrastructure capacity within the municipality." That goes, that speaks directly to the T O D component that we just spoke about. Number five, "the state plan of conservation and development adopted pursuant to Chapter 297," which is the one I mentioned earlier. "The regional plan of conservation and development adopted pursuant to Section 8-35A," and that regional one refers to the WestCOG, WestCOG Group, which is the, the local collection of various municipalities and their agencies that oversee this type of zoning and, and land use development. They have reviewed our draft of the P O C D, and they are in approval of what we put together. Couple of minor comments, but nothing major at all. Number seven, "the physical, social, economic, and governmental conditions and trends." Number eight, "the need of the municipality, including but not limited to human resources, education, health, housing, recreation, social services, public utilities, public protection, transportation, and circulation, and cultural, and interpersonal communications." Number nine, "the objectives of energy-efficient patterns of development, including the use of solar and other renewable forms of energy and energy conservation." Again, that's a "shall," not "may" or "could," but we need to include that. Number 10, "the protection and preservation of agriculture." Number 11, "the most recent sea-level change scenario." Again, that talks to coastal, more coastal communities than ours. And then number 12, "the need for technology infrastructure in the municipality," which is what someone just spoke about and which, which we've included as well. So I just wanted to reinforce that what we have done here is what is mandated by the state. The components to the P O C D draft that we have here, the chapters and the breakdown, are consistent with what they're looking for and what we're required to provide. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Chairman Morrow, we're at our closing. All right, lovely. So why don't we open up to questions? I know some of you have, well, yes, questions.
Yes, yes, I think that they need to answer.
Okay, so we had submitted, the Town Council had submitted written questions to you all, so I'm assuming you have answers to those questions, is that correct?
Can I just ask one? While you're looking for that. And thank you, guys, for all, you know, thank all of you for the time and effort you put into doing this, this is huge. I just want to go back, Dan, to what you were reading. You said, "These are the things the state said we shall," and they said, "we shall address, study," like, what is the action? I'm curious if, if it's.
Shall consider. Shall consider.
And where is that coming from?
Statute 23.
Okay. I just wanted to find out what, you know, what's the action we shall be doing, and I thought it was that, so thank you.
So, I mean, I think the question for you all is how, in what format would you like us to answer all of these questions? Do you want us to go line by line in these questions, or would you prefer them in writing? We, Commissioner Criss's statement was meant to cover a broad amount of those questions, so, you know, it's up to you all. Do you, do you want us to go question by question, or?
I think it would be appropriate at some point to submit the written question, the answers to the questions in writing. I think that would be the most comprehensive, probably the most efficient way of doing this. So with that said, to the extent that members have submitted questions for answering in a written format, all those who have issued questions, if there are any particular ones you would like addressed now, rather than just have a recitation of, you know, however many questions we submitted, so, well, why don't we start with that? So, to the extent, maybe we'll go down the line. Eric, do you have any in particular that you'd like answered, or do you want to, anything in particular?
I am going through my list of questions, and admittedly, a large number of them asked for the approximate cost of certain action steps, which Commissioner Criss explained is not in the purview of the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I'm going through to check off which one of those I'm not going to proceed with. I think you addressed what a transit-oriented overlay district is. It's basically a new set of guidelines applied to a specific area within town that is near or related to the transit system, specifically the Metro North Station, maybe some others, but that's what I think that is. I want to go through the rest of my things, cross out the things that all had cost, and then I'll, if, if you'd like, I'll come back with, with specific questions that I want to ask you. I'll let somebody else go, and then I'll come back. Thanks.
It's fine, Eric, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'm putting people on the spot, but I am trying to keep this as efficient as possible. We all have seen, the Town Council's seen a list of questions, right? So, Kim, do you want to, want to?
Yeah, so, one of the things that works well with when we submit questions, like for the Board of Ed, we get the, the answers in writing, and then we can review them and then follow up on questions. So that would be great to get the answers in writing. I guess I have a couple of comments. One is the 824 that you were talking about, Dan. When I read that on page 90 of the P O C D, it does say "shall consider," but it does not mandate by law that we adopt what's in the state plan of conservation and development, which I understand there's a new one that came out, that I don't know if this document reflects that new draft. It's from 2025. The one that's referred to in the P O C D is 2018 to 2024. Are you aware that there's a new Plan of Conservation and Development draft?
Yes, we are, and it, but it's not adopted yet. So therefore, I believe that we do mention that it is coming onboard, and we're making sure that it's going to be compliant with that, but officially, the old plan is still in effect.
Right. So I guess my question, my overall question, and I, and I have very specific questions that I don't have, that I don't want to bog us all down with very specific things, like what's a form-based code, you know, talk about transit-oriented development, and, but, but so my sense is, is what's the balance between maintaining local control and saying how this P O C D is consistent or inconsistent with the state's things that we want to consider? And that's the balance that I'd like to see struck in the P O C D, and I do see, seem to be a heavy weighting on to have things in line with state goals, and, and I, in terms of the survey that was given, it was, I looked at the raw comments, it was 374 pages, it was very comprehensive. I did not see things in those comments that were consistent with many of the things that were mentioned as action items. So I'm not really sure the connection between, like, if we did data analytics on the survey and we took out your 186 action items, is there support? Is there, you know, narrative support for those actions, or is that coming from perhaps or what is a nice-to-have, or what the state's doing? But the whole purpose of town government is that we have local, but then we try to match that with, you know, other state goals and things like that. So that's kind of my general disconnect. And when I looked at the 2014 P O C D, I see a lot of consistencies between what you've done and what, what was in 2014, but I see a lot more implementation. And I don't know if when people were answering these questions, did they know that you were planning to overhaul almost 50% of the, of the regulations?
Well. Again, these aren't regulations. Our planning and zoning regulations rule. This is a plan of conservation development, it's a recommendation, it's a guideline, right? We believe we've done what's included in this P O C D draft and correctly and accurately reflects the input that we've received from the townspeople, correctly and accurately reflects a, an evolution of the previous P O C D to include new items and elements that have become, such as affordable housing, such as, you know, renewable energy, all of which was not a big discussion point 10 years ago or 12 years ago. We have a responsibility to address those. We believe that we need to determine our own destiny, right? We need to craft language and put a P O C D together that will protect this town in the future to come, regardless of what the state mandates, but what we see as a responsible guideline and playbook for the town for the next 10 years on, to do exactly what Mr. Commissioner Criss recommended earlier, or stated earlier, which is keeping the integrity of a small-town feel and still being able to address development in the town. Whether anyone wants to admit it or not, development's going to happen in some form or another. We've been very lucky to have a moratorium granted for us for the next four years on affordable housing. We still have three applications that you're all familiar with, that we're dealing with. What will happen after those next four years? We don't know. We have to, as a town, we have to collectively come together and put together a plan for creating additional affordable housing units to satisfy the requirements of the state so that in four years, we can possibly apply for another moratorium. Whether that will happen or not, that, that depends on a whole host of things. But that, that train has left the station, and developers are just chomping at the bit to get into this town to build larger developments. And we have the responsibility of crafting a guideline and, and playbook for this town for the next 10 years that will help inform not only the, the, the Planning and Zoning Regulation Amendment in the next two years, but the next 10 years overall. Every application that comes to us that is looking for some type of. Every application that comes to us that is looking for some type of leniency or a special permit allocation in front of P O C D, in front of P and Z, always references, well, it's aligned with your plan of conservation and development. So we have to be careful of, to your point, we have to be careful of what language we put in there so that we're not undermining the overall intent of what we're trying to do here, which is protect the town. But we still have to comply with the state regulations and include the, the obvious items in there that need to be addressed.
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate that and, and I understand. I don't think that we, I think we should be forward looking, but I think the number one narrative comment or survey comment was to protect the quaintness and New England charm. So when I see T O T, C O, T O D, maximum density, increasing density, giving, you know, loosening up regulations so that people can build around the train station and things like that, that seems to be diametrically opposed to the number one priority of the residents. So I'm not quite sure how those come together in a way that, that maintains local control, but also is cognizant of the state considerations. They're not laws, they're not mandates. They're like, they want you to consider it. And if we're not considering it, we can say, well, we considered it, but we're rejecting it for this. I don't see anything rejected from the state plan. And New Canaan is a town, it's not a state, so that's the, the struggle that I'm having.
Yeah, a few, few comments is that, as I stated, we want to be intentional in what we are doing and plan ahead. The default option is simply wait to see what comes over the transom and react to it. So there, for example, some time ago, some people approached on a pre-application hearing, and a pre-application hearing on Pine Street for one of the brown industrial, bustard buildings of putting up a large, larger apartment building. You know, with, and so we could simply wait to see what happens. If you look at Elm Street beyond Park Street, you know, there used to be a bank there that came and went. There was a bank on a corner that's now has yellow tape around it. See what happens there. Next to it is a very old house. Not sure what happens there. And then we have those buildings, some buildings which are empty. And behind it on, on Richmond Hill is a large vacant lot that's been there for a while. Well, what's going to happen with all these things? We can simply wait to, and see this iterative series of applications where we can try to think about it in a consistent, integrated way as a community, which what we're trying to do here, so we can understand exactly what we want to go there and come up with zoning rules that will be consistent with that vision as opposed to, well, someone applied for something about past and that got in, something else happened and that got in. Again, we're trying to plan ahead. It, it's sort of like chess. You're not thinking it doesn't move deep, you're just shoving pieces around on the board. We're not here to shove pieces around on the board. Sometimes they can look at the same thing, but it's not the same thing. We're trying to be intentional and think ahead on what we want as a community, all of which will be noticed, all of which will be discussed in public. So if you have views, our door is always open. We're a phone call away. And this is what, one of the things we're trying to accomplish here.
I appreciate that and I'm going to let my colleague speak, but I think my fundamental belief is that's free enterprise, that that should be decided. And, and the zoning regulations are so, I, I think they're so good now and I know there's issues that it will protect the identity of New Canaan. So by, by having government plan development, that's something that I just feel like is a private enterprise thing based on, you know, economic supply and demand and the means of whomever owns that land. I, I don't see the need for it to be coordinated development. Everything's happened so far, seems to be looking good. Residents love living here. So anyway, those are my comments. I want to give other people time, so.
I'd go back to mine now and, and starting under Action and Strategy one point three point three. I wondered if you could elaborate specifically on what is meant by comprehensive sidewalk expansion plan? That's a very vague term.
Sure, so the.
Page fifty-three.
Thank you.
Was suggested as a way to kind of target and rationalize for the community. Essentially, in the future, they would like sidewalks and how to manage that expansion. Or the study would show, we don't want sidewalks anywhere else in New Canaan. And then it puts it to rest. So that action step was truly meant to just recommend that the community do more targeted outreach and studying to understand what the broader community wants with potential sidewalk expansion.
Comprehensive sidewalk expansion plan would require a study and suppose that, assumingly, consultant and a cost to the town to come up with that study. Okay. Page fifty-nine, Action Strategy two point one point four. And you may have hit this, Commissioner Chris, in your opening statement. I'm asking what the approximate size of a referenced fund for capital improvements might be and where would that come from? But you've already said cost is not part of your Aegis, so is that also, this is out of your area of consideration or delineation or whatever?
Some, some towns, when development takes place, that any development uses community resources to some extent. And so it's simply a fee tax, we have this for affordable housing. So I, I personally see it as somewhat similar to that, that would help to defray the cost impact of development on the infrastructure.
It was also brought to my attention during this sixty-five day review period that the town over the last ten years has been working towards getting rid of individual funds and working towards just having the general fund. So we all, we are considering removing those suggestions from the P O C D because we want to, we don't want to go backwards.
But if, if such a fund were to be established, that would be under the direction or control of the Board of Selectmen and then the Town Council in order to go through that process.
How to price it and everything. It's up to someone else besides us.
Yeah. Page fifty-nine, also under Action Strategy two point one point five. Could you elaborate on what specifically is meant by green building standards, energy efficiency and green roofs? Those are also vague and potentially emotionally charged kind of concepts.
Sure. So energy efficiency can mean, you know, development that utilizes gas instead of oil or electric heating. Could also mean, you know, incentivizing developments that use, you know, lead standards for green building construction. Green roofs specifically mean roofs that are planted with natural material, so trees, gardens.
Whether above or next to a garage. Go ahead.
You know, to mitigate stormwater runoff. Those, that's what we mean.
Okay. Also, Action Strategy two point one point five. Oh, there, I, I'm asking what is specifically meant by renewable and green technologies. I'm assuming that your previous answer would address that. Moving ahead, page sixty-eight. And I think maybe I can just be referred to these Connecticut deeps, responsible recreation principles. Those are available online somewhere. Are you letting me know where to?
Send out those links, but just so you understand, it's essentially like the federal initiative for no trace.
In my preface to all my comments and questions, I said, I've, I've only been on Towns, on Council for about six or seven months. So a lot of this, my first time through this, so I'm learning. What's that?
That's true for many of us.
Yeah.
Last time they did this was two thousand.
Pages seventy-one and seventy-two, Strategy three point three point one. The phrase accessory renewable energy structures, what does that mean? Accessory renewable energy structures, I mean, certain things that are in addition to other things.
So, you know, solar panels, our zoning regulations permit windmills right now, so things like that. It's in our zoning regs, so.
Okay.
Windmill on your property, you know.
Can you elaborate on specifically why encouraging electric lawn maintenance equipment would have meaningful benefits to the town and its residents?
So we received that request specifically from the survey from our community workshops as well. That was not created by the subcommittee or our consultant. We heard that from the public many times over.
I think I remember going back to this and there was an eleven percent overall response rate. And within that eleven percent, there was something like four percent of the respondents actually had some concerns about this. So it's a tiny, tiny little percentage of town residents who actually consider this to be really important. I'm just wondering what we as a town think are the, the real meaningful benefits to the town and its residents for encouraging electric lawn maintenance equipment?
So as the, as you all, as the managers of town ordinances, that would be up for you to evaluate more so than the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So everybody has an opinion on that.
I can answer what the benefits are. I would say two. One is these types of small engines are internal combustion. They tend to be two cycles, some are four, are noisy. And then noisier than an electric engine.
I won't argue the noise question.
And also, well, it depends on where you get your electricity from, which is a whole different conversation. But these small engines tend to have little, if any, a few of any pollution control and they generate a good deal of pollution. Also, you have vibration issues, which can be health issues for the user. Vibration issues for the user, pollution from small engines, which are very polluting.
I think we can argue how pollution, how much pollution they actually cause. We can, that's a matter of scientific data. What specifically is meant by a silver certificate from Sustainable Connecticut? And why is that an advantage to us?
So we can provide you with a link. We received a bronze certificate in two thousand twenty, so that would be the next step. But it's really about, you know, supporting sustainability initiatives, community building among environmental groups. But there are.
So it's a grade and the highest grade is what towns shall aspire to or want to aspire to in terms of getting state recognition. Okay.
There's some funds we get to, money comes with it, not much, but some. We got a bronze one. I was on the subcommittee that was involved with this.
I'm going to guess you don't know the answer to this, but what specifically would be the responsibilities and job scope of the referenced town staff position to address sustainability issues?
So again, we received that through public comment and we just included that in the plan. That would really be up to, you know, H R department, Conservation Commission, Board of Selectmen to really evaluate if that is a need.
And then Town Council, whether or not to fund it.
Yes.
Right? Okay. Why specifically would the establishment of a resiliency overlay district benefit the town and its residents?
Example that I can think of where a resiliency overlay may be helpful is, you know, when you think about last Sunday and the flooding we just had. We have a significant and surprising amount of structures in flood zones and in the flood plain in New Canaan. So let's say we create an overlay zone and properties that are in the flood plain can rezone to this. So, you know, you have setbacks of where you can build your house right now. And unfortunately, if you're in a flood plain, those setbacks may not help you because your, the river is going right through your property or something like that. So a resiliency overlay zone may, you know, depending on what, what the commission decided to do with it, would allow relaxed setbacks. So, okay, you no longer have to build your home in the flood zone. You could relocate it to a different part of your property. So you're out of the flood zone, but you're violating setbacks where if you were a standard two acre parcel or whatever, you wouldn't be able to build it there. So, you know, items like that, just to really help residents.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Cut that's a cost. Do you know specifically what is meant by a comprehensive pedestrian and bicyclist master plan? And why that would be of benefit to the town? Or did that come from public comment?
It, it was essentially meant to kind of, it, it's meant the same as the sidewalk comprehensive plan. We just, we tried to repeat things in certain parts of the plan, just to show that it's relevant in more than one theme. So my answer is the same, just study to see, is it feasible to have bicycle, bicycle infrastructure? You know, do we need more pedestrian sidewalk infrastructure? So similar, similar item.
I think that pretty well covers. Thank you very much for explaining.
So my questions are rhetorical. Not certainly asking for an answer from the panel. I'm just wondering about our process. I, I love what we're doing, Q and As. We're getting smarter. We're establishing a better understanding with the authors of the study. And I think that's great. I don't have a problem with that at all. What, the question that's before us though, is how are we going to react? Are we going to vote for or against the, the, the plan of conservation and development? Or are we going to say, this is the part we like and this is the part we don't like? I don't see that it's feasible between now and the end of the meeting on, on September fourth for us to have a, a very educated path to, to a conclusion there. I don't know what that is, so I'm asking myself that question. If, if it were, if it were up to me and if I were God, I would say, guys, pick three issues that we can evolve and discuss and debate and have an answer for on September fourth. As long as we're, we're focusing on ninety issues, we're not going to have anything to say on September fourth. If what we want to say is we're for it, but we've had, we, we've registered many comments and questions and we defer to the Planning and Zoning Commission to resolve those. That works for me. But if we're going to actually take a vote on September fourth, I think we need some, a little bit more focus than we have right now. That's, that's my two cents. Well, there's not a guarantee we're voting on the fourth. That's number one. It's only on for a possible vote. If we need more time and we have to have this issue on our public agenda for our regular meeting and Chairman Kurtz has very wisely put his meeting or the P and Z meeting on for, after our next meeting. So I think we have plenty of time to discuss what we need to discuss. I think it's also important to be reminded that many in the public may not have reviewed this document. So while we, as the elected members of, representatives of thirty, twenty thousand people, I think we have to have a more broader discussion than a laser focused discussion on issues I think that may not be fully ripe at this time to be narrowly defined and focused on. So as much as I'm all for efficiency and, you know, prudent speed, for purposes of, you know, everyone out in TV land, as John Engel would say, I think it's important that the twenty thousand residents understand that, you know, the group of us have a, a, you know, a multitude of questions on, on a multitude of issues and that has to be discussed and addressed in public. I mean, certainly we'll get the written responses, but I don't think that's the necessary sunlight that's required for us as a, as a publicly elected body. So, and, but that's also, to your point though, and I agree, Tom, is that, you know, I didn't think it'd be a wise exercise to just go one by one and start, you know, reading answers to questions. That's why I wanted a, a more focused discussion, like Eric, I think was really did exactly what I was hoping would happen is just, you know, let's just ask the, the questions you are really focused on out of your X amount that you've, you've provided. So I think that, you know, with all deliberate speed, I think it's already worked. Eric's asked his questions he focused on. Kim has certainly made the points that she wanted to make. I'm interested in hearing anybody else's in that shortened fashion that Kim and Eric had stated. And we just continue to move it along and if we believe at the end of this, and we're moving, I believe if we are focused, and let me back up one moment. I do believe that we had a lot of concerns were addressed in that opening statement, at least as far as I'm concerned. I'm sure there'll be some additional follow-up. But I think utilizing that as a framework with our kind of limited focus questioning, I think we'll accomplish what we need to accomplish. And if there are certain issues that do arise, you know, over the course of the next whatever hour here, that we feel that we can more kind of narrow down on and, and have a little bit more of a focused discussion, we can do that. And they'll be available for calls and emails over the course of the next week. And if we require additional information, we will pose it. They're diligent, they're on top of the game and they can answer before the fourth. And that's when we're on the fourth, right? And then we'll come back on the fourth and we can narrow it down. If we're prepared to vote, we vote. If not, then we'll put it on our agenda. We'll have, keep a limited agenda on our next public hearing, our public meeting. And we can, we can have that, you know, discussion then. I, I, so I think we have the time that we want. But Tom, your point is very well taken. I think ultimately we do need to come down to, hey, are there, is there anything really here that we're looking for as a matter of? The Town Council may have a problem saying, you know, yes, on approval. Do we have any of those issues? And we ultimately may not at the end of this meeting. I don't know. But I do agree with you on that. Look, we got to get to a point, is there, there are three issues that we really think we're having some trouble and can we just address those? And I, I think we're kind of, kind of getting down and sifting down to that. At least that's my, my opinion. What do you think?
Um, I, I mean, I think that this is just taking a step back in a thirty thousand foot view. I, I have no background in planning and zoning. I read this and, and my understanding of the P O C D and, and reading the two thousand fourteen one is that it's sort of aspirational and it's goal and it's supposed to be very broad and broadly worded and cover a variety of topics because you are talking about the next decade and where, where we see the town. It's sort of the most comprehensive global plan that we have out there. And I applaud the work that you all did. I think an eleven percent return rate on a survey here is exceptional. I think that the survey respondents were incredibly thoughtful. And I think that those comments are like very well reflected here. And I, I, I want to sort of look at two different things. The statute that requires us to do this does actually, it's not permissive. Consider doesn't make it permissive. The shall makes it mandatory. The shall makes it mandatory. So to consider means that they have to address it presumably in paper. And that's a requirement of the state mandate. We can't just ignore state mandates that we might not like or think doesn't align with certain values. It needs to be covered and it's important that we do that. We can't be so antagonistic to the state that we are cutting off our nose to spite our face. So, so I appreciated your, your recitation of the statute because I think that that's incredibly helpful to have that framework. And again, if you could provide us with that so that we can post it, I, I just think that that is very important. But I also think the other key element that you discussed, what, I'm sorry, I don't remember which one of you discussed it, but um, was that we can't do anything if it's not addressed. We can't do something that's not addressed in here. So even though this is a goal oriented and aspirational document for our town, it does have real world consequences if something is not included that we might find later on. Like, oh, no, we have to wait another decade to address sustainability or somebody wants to put a garden on the apartment roof. That sounds great. Like, I think that sounds amazing. Putting aside the environmental aspect, which for some reason has become incredibly political and divisive. I have no idea why, but a garden on top of an apartment building sounds kind of lovely. And in keeping with, with the values that we have here in New Canaan. So I think we do need to take a, a bit of a 30,000 foot view. The planning and zoning commission here and, and Ms. Carrie are incredibly capable. And the amount of work that you all do is, is unbelievable and I respect it so much. So I come at this from that perspective of, of like, I'm not going to nitpick here. And I, I think it's a really well done document based on a lot of great feedback from our community. And I appreciate all the hard work that you guys did on it. That's sort of my overarching view of it.
That said, Tom, do you have anything in particular that you would like to address or was it more just process?
Well, actually, that's all I had in mind, but in response to, on this point of the, the statute's action word is consider. That's actually not the case for every one of these items. One of them is it shall be a statement of policy. It shall recommend blah, blah, blah. It shall recommend. It shall promote housing choice. It doesn't say consider promoting housing choice. So there, there are a lot of verbs in there, just, just to keep, keep the record clean. No, that's all I have. Thank you.
And none of that mandates, we actually do everything in here. It just permits us to do everything here because we've addressed it. So it's not saying we are going to do transit oriented development, you know, next year. Right? It just, it leaves open that possibility for us and leaves open options for our town, which I think is so critical. As we head into these like thorny state mandates and things like that. I mean, I think that having a governing document that does reflect the values of a good number of our residents is very important.
Just, just to reinforce that, I mean, none of us are blind to. Just to reinforce that, none of us are blind to sort of the political environment that we live in, in the state of Connecticut and, and what rules Hartford and what their priorities are, right? We, the goal is to create a document that, that will help us for the next 10 years, that will guide us, that will create, that will create a, a playbook for us to use regardless of whether the state has mandated it to be in there or is, is vague about whether it should be considered or not. It's to our benefit to address it now because regard, like I said earlier, regardless of whether you want to admit it or not, you can stick your head in the sand and ignore it. But development's going to happen and we are, will be in a much stronger position if we have a document that helps us structure that development in town to keep that New England small town feel. That's everyone's goal. That's the whole reason we all moved to this town.
A document like this, that's extensive and has a lot of goals in it, actually helps us maintain local control rather than cede it to state mandates.
I don't think there's anything in there that's ceding anything to the state.
Thank you.
Let me mention one thing is that there was the ADU rule. You know, an ADU is accessory dwelling and so got the granny flats, as they're called, but like a second home on your home, but our apartment. And Ms. Carrie can discuss this and it relates to the TOD a bit on some of the thinking regarding this. So bear with us for a second.
About two legislative sessions ago, the state of Connecticut decided to create a mandate that municipalities had to permit accessory dwelling units. You had the ability to opt out of it, but if you were opting out of it, you had to have a slew of votes from various bodies, including planning and zoning. And if you previously had accessory dwelling unit regulations, you could keep those if you opted out. So our thinking with the TOD was for the last three legislative sessions, different housing advocates have been trying to push this legislation through and they haven't been successful yet. But, you know, down the road, five years from now, they may get it through. And if they use that same logic that they did with accessory dwelling units, it benefits New Canaan to have one now or three years from now. Then to wait for the state to say, okay, if you have a Metro North train station, you have to allow six story buildings or whatever it may be. So the purpose of the TOD, while it is a goal or a consideration of the state and it comes from groups that we may not agree with in town. Specifically, if we create one now on our terms, five years from now, 10 years from now, it may actually benefit us more than waiting for the state to tell us what we can or can't do. But that's, you know, that, that's a reason why to consider adopting one, not that we need to or that it is what's best for the town. But it's an argument as to why we should include it.
We're running ourselves a free option.
That comes from the survey. That comes from your judgment and the consultant, right? The survey didn't say, you, the people don't know that.
Correct. It, it came from our analysis as professional planners and our experience with the state and with previous legislative sessions.
Again, we're trying to think a couple of moves deep here and give ourselves options in the future. And as I noted, you know, if we don't have the P O C D, it makes it difficult for us to do something. So we don't want to find ourselves stuck in the wilderness.
And to be fair, a lot of, if we were to build higher density housing, it, it would have to be within the town sewer and water circle.
Absolutely.
Which limits us a lot. So it would probably just by happenstance be oriented near the transit, given what is available, right? So we might as well have a regulation that, that addresses that and sort of checks that box. If that makes, does that make sense what I'm asking?
The, the P O C D was, I think, explicit, Chairman Redmond, that we do not want to expand the sanitary sewer footprint for the town. What we have, we have, let's say, this is our resource, probably will be used more intensively within the current footprint. But we want to husband those resources for likely more densification downtown, which we've already had. If you look at Cross and Biddy Street, we now have an apartment building. That has what a physical therapist on the, on the ground floor on Biddy Street, on Biddy Street, on Cross Street, we have a, another apartment building. There was the, it's not as been built, but we have the Burtus Street development that was mentioned. We had a pre-application hearing for the old Raymond building, which is that white building with those slats in front on Main Street. It's over a hundred years old, but they're considering purchasing it and keeping great retail, but.
It's actually a formal application now. We're hearing it in September.
Okay.
Formal application.
Anyway, they did that and they're thinking of, of putting housing up above. You know, we have Forest and.
It's happened. Just to tag on to the one from Main Street.
Oh yeah.
I'm sorry. The, the application from Main Street, they're, they're redeveloping it with residential units up above, which is a great plan for that particular building. They're adding a penthouse level to, to get them to the height they need. It's, and I'm probably, I don't think I'm speaking out of terms.
Don't give your opinion.
No, not my opinion. But what they're doing is using, and we've asked them to use the current affordable housing mandate that we have in our own regulations, which is the 15% rule. And trying to get a certain component without triggering the state 830G regulation, which would then give them carte blanche to build whatever they want. Right? So they're, they're very smart about working within the guidelines that we've already established to redevelop the property. And that's what we want. That's what we want to encourage. We don't want to leave ourselves open to every 830G application.
I think it's fair to say that some of the downtown housing that's being created, such as the condo development on Forest Street, the one in Forest Locust, are well designed and have been very popular and successful. I don't see that as a bad thing. Frankly, if you want to call that more intense development, help yourself, but again, no one's talking about a 15 story building. I mean, I'd be hard.
Story building. We're not even talking about a five story building.
Low rise that's consistent with the character of the town. Excuse me, with the New England, New England style of the town, I'll put it that way, a better way. Can I ask a real quick, I think helpful question? When you said limiting the expansion of the sewer capability.
Sanitary sewer.
That's, that's the footprint that's limited, not the, not the volume?
The sand, the, the footprint. In other words, what is connected to the sewer?
Okay.
We want to maintain that footprint and per the P O C D so that the significant excess resources that our wastewater treatment plant has will be devoted to, not to 15 blocks in this direction, but to the types of development we've discussed, been discussing here within that footprint, which is essentially downtown.
And doesn't the volume issue govern, quite honestly, ultimate future development? It governs it, right? There's only, there's a maximum capacity. After that, the town would have to undertake a major, major discussion and bonding issue to expand it. So while the P O C D, I get it, it's a planning document, it's aspirational in some respects, but ultimately no major, major development really could be implemented that would surpass the volume capacity of the sewer and that discussion to me. So that's what's just kind of sitting in the back of my mind here overall is however many years out. Right? It's the issue of you can only really go so right now or, you know, and some will get into it on a public record, but there's the argument being made, there's a, a volume issue now. So to me, I'm like, I, I get what's in this document, but there's really only so much we really could do without a major, major discussion and, and expansion of that sewer system, which I know is not on the table. So it's just something that to me, as I've read this document, I said, well, there's kind of, I use this air quotes. It's a backstop, meaning it's a, it's, it's the paramount consideration for future development in the downtown in terms of what that volume, it all only can be done what's within the existing volume capacity. Anything outside that will not get, it's physically impossible for ever to happen unless we expand as the town, the volume, which is a discussion is years off from now. So to me, that, that's just, it's not a comfort issue. It's just, it's just reality of what really ultimately the downtown would look like. Because we have a, we have a, a cap based on the volume of this, of the sewer system.
Agreed. The, the sanitary sewer is a, is a big deal. And to the extent, to extend to sanitary sewer geographically, you are facilitating more intense development in a, in a sprawl. This is not something that the plan of conservation development is supporting. We want to have anything that is more intense, which is still relatively not intense in the grand scheme of things, as Ms. Carrie mentioned, to be within that footprint, mostly in the downtown. I mean, the downtown is the heart, is the heart of the town. It's treasure. It's a, it's a real treasure. It is far nicer than most downtowns and I think in, in this, in this area, even though some of them are quite nice. But I think the addition of residential in the town has been a plus. I think it has more foot traffic. It's helpful for retail, more vibrancy downtown. And you, you want to do that in a, in a measured, thoughtful way. But as a concept, it seems to have worked reasonably well for this town.
So before I turn it over to Christina, I do want to ask you guys to just shift a little bit. Cause I always love when a member of the public comes forward. So you heard the gentleman raise an issue. I really would appreciate a response to what he said. Can, can someone take the lead on that?
Regarding telecommunications?
Yeah.
Yeah. Happy to. So four years ago, I helped spearhead the current telecommunications and cell tower regulations that we have within our planning and zoning regs now. The one thing you need to consider is that we as a town can make recommendations and again, aspire to certain criteria of how we want that development to look and, and how it's to be built and evidenced on a particular site. But the state overall, their, their citing council has final rule over that regardless of what we want. They, we went through this with the, with the property up at St. Luke's, submitted our recommendation. It's still, it got passed. It, they did not take into consideration everything that we wanted because our regulations do have certain criteria in there. For not only the tower itself and the, the structure, but also the, the support, support equipment down at the bottom. There's a generator. There's a lot of transformers and telecommunications. Our regulations are written where we want those hidden. We want them within a structure to make it look like a barn or a shed or something like that, which is all possible. And it's been done before, but the state doesn't look at it the same way as a requirement. So they don't mandate that be done on certain sites. Certain developers will, will do it on their own just to satisfy the concerns of the town that they're working with. It all depends, depends on the developer you're working with. As far as the technology component of is concerned, we really don't have a, a say in that. That the utilities commission has probably more, more visibility and more background into what the technology is that's, that's being implemented. We do have a, a certain hurdle to cross because of the terrain within our town, right? We're very hilly. We've got a lot of valleys and ridges and, you know, roads are named after them. Because of that, the certain technologies don't work as effectively as others. That doesn't mean that there's probably other technology out there that will be coming down the pipeline. I, I for one know that Verizon's been putting in small 5G nodes all over town. So those will be, and probably are actively working and picking up that signal. But that's, that's the carrier and they, they look at it from a standpoint of revenue return. If they're going to invest in the town, how much revenue are they going to get from that investment? We have little, little control over that. It's, it's more of a, you know, beg and plead with the carrier to do it a certain way and, and work with a tower builder to, or, you know, carrier builder to implement it in town.
I appreciate it. Hope that was helpful a little bit. It may not be much one day here. Anything else on that? And I'm going to turn it over to.
The only point I would make is that public safety has said many times that very good telecommunications is vital to them to be able to do their job and protect their people. And I think that's something the P O C D supports. Now, how to technically do that, it's a different conversation. My own little story is there was a major windstorm and a tree went down and knocked down lines right in front of my house and with the live wire and set the house, the, the house, but the property across the street on fire. And so I'm rushing out, scolded with my cell phone and I get no signal. I lost, I don't have any signal. I have a booster in my house. I'm literally living next to a cell tower, literally. My desk is about that far away from the cell tower and it couldn't, it took me about a couple of minutes to get it. I mean, fortunately, no one was hurt. It was an empty lot. It was just some leaves burned up, but it was moving towards a house. And what if that had, God forbid, you know, hit a car or a pedestrian or a house? You know, minutes matter in these things. And so public safety is certainly a very important concern. When we think about any kind of application, you know, what does the fire marshal say? The fire marshal's not happy. I got to tell you, it's very hard for me to ever get happy with it.
Right.
And so we think very hard on these issues and that's included in the P O C D. Again, how to do this technically, greater minds will have to, have to sort out, but this is certainly vital for us. People want good cell service.
Excellent. Okay, Christina.
Okay. So I, first of all, I want to thank you for the effort put forth in creating this P O C D. But when, there are a couple of things that I want to start by saying. To have it presented at the middle of July during the summer dormant period while everybody's on vacation was not the best time. And to possibly have a vote on the 4th or early September, really it brings everybody into attention almost at the last few days before it's implemented or accepted. And that's a problem. And I think that many of us try to, to make sure that those things don't happen. So I'm just raising concerns about the timing and why perhaps not everybody's aware of what's in, in the report or what's being proposed. So when I read the report, I thought immediately that it did not align exactly with what is required in a P O C D for municipality. It, it speaks more of the mandates that come down from the state. Now, the difference is that I'll read you something. This is from, directly from the statutes. The P O C D shall be a statement of policies, goals and standards. The physical and economic development of the municipality be designed to promote with the greatest efficiency and economy, the coordinated development of the municipality in identity areas where it's feasible and prudent. And that we're feasible and prudent is. And that word feasible and prudent is important because that's not in the state. That's only in the municipal portion of the, of the statutes that relate to the municipality. From the state is a top-down mandate, these are the goals, this is what each agency is to do. So for those that don't know it, the state P O C D is basically a conservation development plan of policies for the inter-agencies of the state to deal with. So they just, they devised these policies where each of the agencies needed to report in a certain way with certain data in order to communicate internally within the state. That was not mandated of the municipalities. Each municipality P O C D is different in its entirety, one town to another, to another. So when I look at the P O C D that was created, the one thing that I see are that comes front and center of the rules that are established by the state, but there's little bit, there's little in terms of the accomplishment and the five, 10-year capital projects that we have along the way, which take up a huge portion of our ability to finance those projects. And unlike other towns, we don't have the financial support from the state. It's the taxpayer that would be funding these efforts going forward. So when I look at the municipal P O C D requirements and I read physical, feasible and prudent, I know that between the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, the Town Council, we're going to weigh in on what we can do, what we can afford. But when we create a timeline of 10 years and the only thing we talk about in it, or most of what we talk about are the mandates by the state, we are selling ourselves short. Because in one of your surveys, one of the concerns from the residents was that traffic and congestion were an issue in the center of town. Well, there's nothing to address it in the P O C D report. There's nothing about how it's going to be resolved, it goes straight to transit-oriented development. So with that in mind, I have to say, we need to take a step back into wording in such a way that it gives confidence to the residents that we're going to be thorough and study this and use words as feasible and prudent, or create a study rather than shall, or rather than use other verbs that would lead us or lead somebody applying for an application to think that we're obligating ourselves to produce it. We saw that with the 2014 P O C D and developers that pushed to build beyond our zoning regulations. And the one thing they kept saying over and over, it's in the P O C D, it's in the P O C D. So I don't want to create another document where someone can come in and expect that these are our goals and they're there to meet them. So with that in mind, in 2020 and also in 2014 for the P O C D, there have been surveys done by the town and those surveys have been mailed out to the residents and they have come back. And in 2020, we did one town-wide and we got a response of about thirty to thirty-five percent of the population that were residents. My understanding from the P O C D and from some of the notes that I saw on it was that not everybody who responded to the surveys were New Canaan residents. Some worked in town, some own businesses, some were from that, yeah, that worked in town. So that eleven percent needs to be broken down as to what percentage of the population are taxpayers in this town.
What, what was the survey from 2020 that you're referring to?
I have a copy of it here.
What was it for? Survey of what?
It, it was basically asking the questions of the residents about life in New Canaan, about their priorities, about the quality of the schools, the affordability of, of living here.
Community survey?
Yeah, it's a community survey. It's dated February 19th, 2020.
Who sent it out?
Uh, the town. It was a town-wide survey. So this is one of a few that, from the thirty-plus years I lived here that have gone out. So this is the most recent that I could find. But the way in which the survey is done, at least you're targeting households and you know exactly what percentage of the population is coming back. And this was not just limited to a survey that was mailed out, there were calls made out to the households asking the questions if we had not received them. So to me, that, that shows a greater integration in terms of the residents' feelings and support for something than just having a meeting and it's a matter of who comes. And when it's open to outside of the community, then it throws off the numbers.
I don't think a business owner is outside the community, but that's.
So. So in terms of the P O C D, I think that the tone of it needs to be more aligned with what's feasible and prudent.
If, if I can just interrupt, so what would you? Yeah, it's in front of me. What would you recommend we would have done differently than what we have already done with all the community involvement surveys that we've done for the last year on this?
Well, I have asked for, as, as an example of the P O C D months ago, to just see what it encompassed. And all there was online were the themes with nothing in comparison to what's actually in the P O C D that I could understand from the point of view that of what, what was actually going to be included and the tone of what was going to be included, which is sounds more like a mandate, closer to a mandate than it is a suggestion. I would have expected the plan of conservation to talk about the projects we have accomplished most recently, the ones we're planning and accomplishing over five, 10 years, and also including the things that are mandated from the state to look at some of the goals. But one of the things in the municipal P O C D you're allowed to do, that if you cannot comply with one of those mandates, that you're required just to give an explanation. But we're seen to be complying with everything, which is not bad if we can. But there's not just the cost associated, but also the fact that if those are things that we must complete or we're planning to complete in 10 years, where does that leave the infrastructure and other things that we are already planning to do? There's only so much money.
But we addressed infrastructure.
What?
Addressed infrastructure. I guess I'm just confused as to what your interpretation of where in this P O C D are we mandating anything?
There are words, I believe Tom brought it up, it's just.
That was, he was reading the statute.
Nothing is mandated. I said that in my opening comment.
I can go back to the report and, and outline it for you. I, off the top of my head, I can't say, but they weren't, what, there wasn't a presentation of we shall study. Like, for example, the.
I think we've actually worked, we've actually worded every one of the chapters in that manner. Nothing, nothing is a specific mandate. And then again, I re, I re, I refer back to the eight twenty-three state regulation where we shall include certain topics in our P O C D and that's, that was our guiding principle. I'm not really, I guess I'm lost as to what you think we should have done differently.
Very briefly address, the goals, strategy and actions were released on May 20th to the public, which was the day of our last community workshop. We posted them on the website, they're still on the website. We handed out printed copies to everyone that attended the workshop and then we had a survey posted online for two weeks that had a press release I emailed out to our email list. So these actions, policies, goals, chat, all of the theme chapters and what is basically the skeleton framework of the implementation table have been released to the public since May 20th and we did not, not we, but the subcommittee did not vote on saying that this draft was complete to refer to you all until after that was done and until after they felt comfortable that the public had had enough time to look at these items.
Sarah, for example, on the state P O C D, a new draft version has come out. And I don't know exactly when it was released, but I came across it and I compared it with the other one. And in reading, it was enlightening to see where they had made some mistakes. And they acknowledge that their P O C D was from the top down, that it was a set of rules that did not include the interaction or contribution of any of the agencies that were forced to basically go by it. So in this new conservation development policies plan, what they did is they went back and created a consensus. In the survey, in everything that you printed, nothing was sent that I have seen, and I may be wrong, to anyone on Town Council or any other committee to get the input from the bodies to opine on the subject. The residents or the public might have gotten it. I haven't seen many of these advertising notices, but I haven't received anything and I check everything in my mailbox. So I don't know how many people have received it. But I do know that we got this on May, on July 17th, 16th, it was available. And there re, there really is enough time for the residents to be able to review and most of them are on vacation. And I know there's a sixty-five day period and I'm not criticizing, all I'm saying is what could have been done differently? I think the timing originally was meant to come out earlier, but there were some delays that caused it to come out later. So it was always planned to be on.
Yes, yeah.
July.
Yes, our draft was always meant to be completed around May and to be issued for review and to you guys in July. And to have any public comment in September to try and vote on it by October, at worst November, because we have to be completed by December.
In Jan, in the January, I believe it was January sixth meeting that you had at your subcommittee, you both had presented that as an issue of not having to bring it before the public in the middle of July.
We wanted to make sure that the original draft that was posted in May did not happen in July and that we did not have any kind of meetings requiring public input before anywhere between July 4th and Labor Day. That was the window that we did not want to depend on public input because we all are fully familiar with the fact that people are disappear for the summer. So we tried to do the brunt of the work between September of last year and May of this year, which involved all of the public hearings, all of the public input, all of the surveys, everything happened with full visibility to everyone in town. Not sure why you didn't get it, but everyone in town was, sent the emails and mailings or whatever went out. So we tried our best to get all of that public input. And we felt we got a very good representation of the towns, town residents' opinions and, and suggestions.
Okay. We'll see when there's a public hearing what the public has to say, that's not what I'm hearing.
The public's been involved heavily.
I think there's a councilman on Zoom who's raising their hand.
Just I, I feel like this seems like slightly adversarial towards these guys and I have a different impression. I mean, for example, one of the things that really stood out for me in, in reading this was the section on the desire for, you know, the preservation or I don't know, the creation of more small housing and the percentages that you laid out in which, you know, New Canaan has a certain high percentage of homes with multiple bedrooms, but very few actual family members in them. And the need in terms of attracting young people to the town or keeping fifty-five-year-old residents plus in the town, you know, need for smaller housing. So I, I mean, I hear that everywhere I go and for as long as possible. So, I mean, so I'm just trying to isolate that as a, as an issue, one of many that I found where, you know, it's very easy to sort of microscopically say, oh, like the state is managing a, you know, the transportation zone or, or, you know, this or that. But, but there are plenty of things in this document that absolutely reflect not only desire, but in my opinion, like something super essential that the townspeople want. And, and my only question will be like, you know, I look forward to hearing creative solutions from P and Z because I don't really understand how you can use zoning regulation to preserve smaller housing, but like a conversation for another time. But I, that's one of several. You had something in there about an exploration of perhaps, you know, expanding the historic district in town or, or the village expansion. So I just think it's unfair to sort of, you can cherry pick from certain council members to say it's all about Hartford mandates and it's terrible for the town, but there's so much in it that reflects genuine desires of, of the town. I look forward, as Hillary had said, it's aspirational and then, and then, then you guys, P and Z will get down to the nitty gritty. I also think that in the implementation plan that Sarah sent out, you know, there, there, I'm, you know, there, there are in each item, sometimes, you know, an implement, implementation plan is like going to be solved by, you know, grant applications or it's, I saw lines about, you know, you know, private developers working to support us with infrastructure problems. So I, I think it's just, I'm trying to add this as like perspective.
Thank you. Maria, do you have some questions?
I'll probably mention some of the things Christina mentioned, but I, I just had a question. There are a hundred and eighty-six action items and P and Z changing policies will address forty-five percent of them. How much of P and Z regulations do you imagine you'll be modifying?
So I mean, the co, the comprehensive review is that we are reading through every.
Back up.
Wake up.
Review means that we are reading every single zoning regulation to evaluate it against case law. You know, various updates to statutes. So it, it's very difficult to quantify what actually, what the percentage of the zoning regulations that will change because it is not only a function of the P O C D, but it's also a function of what have our regulations not stayed up to date with.
Right. Yeah, I've, I've been on planning and zoning six, 2010, so fourteen years. And in those fourteen years, what's evidenced itself is there's a lot of gray areas within the planning and zoning code on a whole host of things, everything from setbacks to height and loom and coverage, et cetera, that that we've kept a tally of things we need to address and correct. They are constricting certain types of construction and development in town, causing excess number of applications coming to us for a special permit that really isn't required because they're not doing anything necessarily out of context of the fabric of the neighborhood that they're going into. But there happens to be a regulation that is restricting them on what particular move they need to do, right? So it's, it's more of a correction in certain terms for, for those regulations. And then there's also a learning from other towns in the area, right? They, they do their zoning regulations, every town does them slightly differently. Different calculations on floor area ratios or height or loom or whatever the criteria may be. And, and those types of learnings, we'd like to take the best ones and try and incorporate them into our zoning regs.
So my biggest, you know, the big picture idea that I'm getting is there's, you know, all these actions, they, there is an implementation plan and it's aspirational, it's a planning guide, I totally appreciate that, who does what. It does say the goal is to have everything complete in eight years on the implementation guide. So I'm wondering if, I, I actually think some of the terms that are in the plan are almost too prescriptive and too, I, I was the one that asked about cost, you know, who, who designs a streetscape design? Like, there are things in here that I'm wondering who's paying for the study? Who's, who's doing these things and where's that money coming from? And then on top of that, as we're going through all the P and Z regulations, it seems like a really tight timeframe because you'll need hearings for those to change regulations and then do everything in the plan. I mean, my wish really would be to see everything that might have a cost, even if you don't determine the cost, indicated. Because I think that's kind of important, like the whole topic on the sidewalk expansion, that kind of seemed like it was a done concept, like let's look into expanding sidewalks and to.
That's, sorry, that's nothing new. If you look at the 2014 P O C D, we had a sidewalk expansion map, a, a master plan for the town of what we wanted to do as far as sidewalks.
But we just had hearings like two weeks ago where, you know, maybe that's, that's a cost.
But that's, that was a hearing for cost, not necessarily for what a desire for sidewalks in town is. How it's paid for, how the town manages it, whether they maintain it, that's for you guys to decide. That's not our purview.
I agree. And I just think the, the terms in here, there were some that I felt were too prescriptive and I felt too predetermined. Like, I think there needs to be a little bit more, you know, and I can send you examples, but rather than design a plan, it might be.
Investigate.
Investigate, yes.
That's fair.
And I think that would help highlight, you know, I, I don't think we should. And I think that would help highlight, you know, I, I don't think we should get into too deep. We can always, like, P and Z can always change a regulation right now without a P O C D. So I don't think it'll stop development.
No.
You can't?
No, I'm saying, I agree with it. It won't.
All right. So I, I just, I, I'm afraid this is so tight, like we really, there's a lot of work in there. I mean, it shows all the work that you did, but all those actions really, there's, it's going to keep everyone busy for a couple of years. And then the ones that are very prescriptive, I do think they should be more investigative.
Fair statement. Penny?
Oh, I have been sitting here listening to everybody's comments and say, okay, that was one of mine, one of mine, another mine. So you've covered the deal of what was been in my mind. I, I will say this is a phenomenal piece of work. Having, you know, gone through other P O C Ds, I think the implementation part of it is the one that has been the least successful, shall I say. But it, it, you have it very, very well marked out as to, you know, who's responsible for, you know, carrying these action plans ahead. I will have to say, I'm not so sure that we shouldn't expand the number of people on Planning and Zoning Commission in order to divide up some of these responsibilities and areas. Because I don't know how the number that we have got sitting around the table is going to be able to accomplish all of this.
You're wondering how we're still married.
Well, we all have that problem, Dan, so. But it, and, and I think that is something that, you know, maybe you bring in and some subcommittees to assist with, with some of the legwork. And I know right out of, you know, Sarah's office that a lot of that will get accomplished at that time, too. So the only, the only comment that I'm really receiving from the public is some, a little bit deeper consideration for preservation. And as you could imagine, it's coming from, you know, the various preservation historic groups. There's been some misunderstandings as to authorities or authorities are not clearly delineated or actually need to be delineated. I know the Historic Review Committee submitted a request for consideration of greater authority in the early parts of, of a proposal that went to the Town Council ordinance and actually bounced back to Planning and Zoning. So I'll, I'll have those folks get in touch with you again to, you know, discuss what their concerns are. Because we don't want to miss out on an opportunity to have the proper authorities in a timely manner before a project gets into, you know, a timeframe that, that you can't either stop it or alter it or something. So I'll have them do that. But my congratulations again then as to all the work that you've done. It's, it's very impressive. And I know from the folks who are on Planning and Zoning, you have an incredible commitment to your work and it shows. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny.
I have a quick question and I hope this doesn't inspire an hour-long discussion and I'm assured Mike it won't. What exactly is our role here? Because I do worry that, you know, are we here to provide constructive criticism? Are we here, do you require a vote from us? And this kind of piggybacking on what, what Tom was asking, does, will this move forward? And you can incorporate our comments or not, choose or not, this is a planning and zoning document, correct? Is it something that we have to approve or if we give a thumbs down, it's dead in the water?
So this is all outlined in eight dash twenty-three in the statute. So essentially the role of the legislative body of a municipality is to either endorse or reject the plan and you can endorse and reject, reject parts. The Planning and Zoning Commission after the sixty-five days is up. If the legislative body is unable to provide a report, either endorsing or rejecting, the commission can act without that report. And if a full rejection occurs or a rejection of parts, the Planning and Zoning Commission by super majority can still adopt the plan.
So it was two-thirds.
Super majority.
Yeah.
Super majority.
Is.
Those are the rules.
I appreciate the clarification. That's extremely helpful to, to hear again.
I, I just want to add too that since we are elected, we do hear from people and I think we, we represent what we're hearing out there. And, you know, just even in looking at the survey, the four hundred pages of survey results, I saw people did not want overdevelopment. That came up over and over. And I think that's really the biggest concern and I know that in talking to people. So that's, you know, and if we're changing, if we're touching every single P and Z regulation, I think there could be a chance you might end up, you'd end up with overdevelopment. So I just think that's something to be really careful of.
Sure. Okay.
Is, is there something that protects what Maria is talking about, overdevelopment? I, I don't see anything in the P O C D that limits or protects the quaintness of the town. Like I, I see the statements of like, what we're going to do to, 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 you know. What, what actually protects what we have?
I mean, the first theme is protecting New Canaan small town.
But what actions do you have that are, I, I don't.
There's many sections. Like.
Don't forget, don't forget the Planning and Zoning Commission. You guys, you don't need the planning, you don't need a P O C D to protect from overdevelopment.
I appreciate what you're saying, Tom, but I, I'd like to see the actions since they are going to be implemented and you're going to try to redo overhaul all of the planning and zoning regulations or at least fifty percent of them. That's one of the things that I'm looking for is what's actually going to protect the, the integrity of, you know, the quaintness of the town.
Let me, is that if we, John, hold on, hold on one second. I just need to say something. Just because I got hammered on this in court all the time, we can't have cross talk. And, and I'm just saying for all of us, because we all do, it was all smart and we all like to get our opinions out. But we have a member that asks the question of our esteemed panel, they're entitled to get a response. If any one of us disagrees or wants to jump into the ring and start, you know, pounding, there's, that's not the appropriate time. We can have a respectful discussion, but let our colleagues ask the questions, get their responses and then we can have follow-up questions. Thanks. Okay, thanks, John.
Well, one of the issues is that if we have a situation where we just are sitting back and accepting applications that appear, let's say two of the brown brick buildings on Pine Street get torn down and someone wants to put up a four-story building on them. Okay, then we, we deal with that. Is that what we want? We want something else? We want great retail and so on? Again, to the extent we have a plan that delineates exactly the type of development we want, we can control it from the get-go and not simply deal with whatever comes at us instead of hope we can manage it. And, and so this is one of the reasons why we're thinking about these types of approaches. It's simply that we'll end up getting something that we have decided affirmatively we want as far as location, size, design, dimensions. Is it retail? Is it office? Is it housing? What kind of housing? To the extent we're more specific, certainly than we are now, we would then be able to control that destiny a little bit better than simply saying, well, let's hope some of the developments that are suggested are very good ones. And then you're going to have a piecemeal type of situation, which you ended with pieces you don't like. So this is the reason why we have suggested some things like different types of planning tools in order so that we can think of something as a whole. So take another one, look at Cross Viti. But if someone, you know, bought a whole block and said, I want to put up a building, the block size, you're going to be happy with it? That's, that's a lot of development. But someone makes that application, we have to deal with the application as it shows up on our desk. And so suggested, what we're suggesting here is that by trying to think a couple of moves deeply and think about the height, dimensions, design and so forth, as we have stated, we can have a better position to control exactly what we get as opposed to hope for the best, which often doesn't work.
But, but isn't that already in the planning and zoning, that someone couldn't build a huge place at, whatever you said, Vertus or whatever? I mean, aren't we, don't we already have the planning and zoning regulations that would prevent that?
To an extent, but for example, how do, how do you want Pine Street to look in twenty years? How do we want Pine Street to look in twenty years? Or in ten years, sorry, ten years, excuse me, ten years. What do we want that to look like? To assume this could be more of the same is probably not true. Just rates are coming down, real estate's coming.
Well, I mean, I did notice, it was one of the questions, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. It was an industrial zone designated for that area. And that was one of the questions that I, I'm not going to ask you to answer that now, but that's what I'd really like to see in writing is, why is there an industrial zone at that location? Why is there an industrial zone? There's a second location in town. I've never seen that before.
So I'll, I'll address it now since it's been brought up. That was not the zoning map. That was the land use map, which is essentially taking all of the assessor's data of what the existing land use is on property. So right now the Pine Street is listed as its current land use as industrial because of its brownfield status and due to its previous use as industrial sites from when it was in use years ago. So that's not zoning. That's not stating we're creating an industrial zone. That's stating what is currently, it is listed as within the tax assessor's records.
And how does that match the future land plan map? I mean, in other words, it looks like you're saying that could be the case. Like I don't see an asterisk that says, well, this was exactly what you said. And so like, most people aren't reading the things as deeply, but I have gotten comments that people have looked at the maps and they said, oh, there's something new that popped up on this map, such as.
So we can, we can clarify further what the land use, the current land use map is, and that is incredibly helpful feedback. But the difference is, current land use is what exists and what it is classified as of today in New Canaan in this moment. The future land use plan is what you want it zoned as for the future. So like that Pine Street area is zoned as mixed use downtown for the future. There's no, no creation of an industrial zone whatsoever. There's no actual language anywhere in an action saying that we want to create an industrial zone. It's not a thing whatsoever.
It, it's an adivism to what it was in years gone by.
It was a brownfield?
Yeah.
That's what it's classified as.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I just have one closing thing. I, I should have started my, all my questions and comments by saying this. A lot of other people have said it. This is an incredible amount of work that's gone into this and I appreciate it. And I'm sure there are twenty thousand people in New Canaan who appreciate it. We take it for granted when it's sent to us and we rifle through it and come up with questions. I don't have any intention of being adversarial here. I want you to know how much I appreciate the effort, the hours and hours and hours. And I've watched a few planning and zoning meetings go five and six hours. So I, I know you spend a lot of time. I also want to remind all of us that in the introduction to the P O C D draft that we have, there is nothing that says this is a mandate of what we are going to do by this certain time. It says this plan may be used to guide commission and board activities, to plan for improvements and to secure funding. It may be used for those things. And in most of those action steps, many of which I had questions about, it says, consider the implementation of explore, research ways in which we can work together, coordinate, et cetera, et cetera. There's nothing in there that says we will mandate such and such by such and such a time. Then your implementation plan lists out years, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty and thirty-two. You know, by twenty-eight, that priority, once the zoning regs are done, we don't know how long that's going to take. By twenty-thirty, either requires significant time or it'll get lower priority, we'll move it along. Things by twenty-thirty-two, low priority, may get pushed to next P O C D. So there's no definitive guideline for any one specific action and neither is any one specific action mandated. I need, need to remind myself of that and I think we need to keep that in mind. And we also need to keep in mind that every member of the Planning and Zoning Commission wants New Canaan to be a wonderful place to live and that's why we've all come here and stay here and we're all working together. So I appreciate your efforts and I appreciate your answering all my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else here? Anybody else out in Zoom world? Anybody?
So I have two quick comments and we'll wrap it up. One, just how does this work with your process? Do you have your legal counsel like review this before you all vote on, whenever that is in the end of September? Or have they reviewed it? Like just very like thirty-second response there.
Putting my P O C D chairman hat on for this. Once the mandatory sixty-five day comment period is over, then the ball falls back to us. And so my intention would be to hold at least one other, I hope, one other P O C D subcommittee meeting to address feedback we received during the sixty-five day period, not only from town council, but the public because it is a public comment period. We'll see what we have at the end of the sixty-five day period. We'll cross that bridge when we come to it. We're not there yet. At that point, we will be considering all the comments we have and take, my, my guesstimate is that we will take adjustment actions to the draft as appropriate as we consider the input we have. I would hope that at that meet, at that one meeting, maybe a second meeting, we would then vote on a final draft. Then we would present that to the full Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, the full Planning and Zoning Commission is against Chairman Reban's decision, but my understanding is that that would probably be a special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which would solely deal with the P O C D. I think that's firm to term. And then there would be another public meeting where you get another bite at the apple, where the public and anyone else who wishes to comment could comment and that those comments would be reviewed. Adjustments could be made at that meeting, depending on what we hear. And probably at that meeting, could vote on it, would, the intention would be to try to vote on it definitively at that meeting. That's the current timeframe. And so one of the things I, my mandates I gave to S L R at the beginning is that I wanted to be sure, one, everything we're required to do, we do properly, and I think that's been done. And that we meet the deadline. Day late, dollar short is not in my vocabulary. And if we're late, as noticed, we can lose some funding potentially. Don't want that to happen on my watch. So you sort of back up, you start with a exit and sort of back up from there. It's a good way to do it. So if you assume that the, this P O C D subcommittee meeting would be, let's say, the end of September, maybe early October, then sometime in October will be the special meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Maybe it gets decided then, if we have to kick it another couple of weeks.
To the October meeting.
We, we maybe do it the end of October at a regular meeting or maybe another special meeting in November and we still try to get it ahead of the whole Christmas season, which would not be a good, that'd be something I would endeavor to avoid. So this is the general timeframe plan we would have.
So, and maybe I didn't understand some, a couple of things. One, has this document reviewed by legal counsel at all up until right now? Sarah?
We have not reviewed this with the town attorney, except for specific action items where we were concerned about the legality of them.
Okay. And is there a point where it will be presented to legal counsel saying it's gone through our process and here it is before we as P and Z vote on it?
So I have reviewed the sixty-five day comment period with them as well and they have not recommended that they read the plan verbatim or anything to that effect so that we've kept them up to date, but they have not recommended any further involvement than any questions we have specifically for them.
What is the drop dead day P and Z needs to approve or take whatever action it needs on this plan?
Thirty-one December twenty twenty-four.
End of year, okay. And what, if any, is the process if, for asking for an extension?
There are no extensions on the sixty-five day.
Okay. And what is the penalty for not filing it? And this is just so I know.
There is no penalty. It's just the Planning and Zoning Commission can make a decision without a report from you all.
Yeah. All right. And then my other area, other, just kind of more of a comment. You know, this document, and it is an incredible piece of work. I, you know, this is, there's a lot that goes into it. I understand that. But this, my, my concern is more about our processes at town, not anything, your, your efforts or diligence at all. A, a document of this nature, like you say, it's aspirational. It sets our ten-year goal or at least guidelines for the next ten years is where we should, the town. Guidelines for the next ten years is where we should, the town may need to move itself to comply with, um, you know, compulsory, you know, mandates from, from, from Hartford. But there's a cost associated with this, likely a major, major cost, and I get it, and I've heard you say, look, that's, that's not our issue. But for the town, it is an issue, and it's a big issue. Uh, and when you talk about what our role is here on town council, right, we're the ones, you, you have, there's a process, you, you have to either approve or reject this document, then you can take whatever actions you could choose to override us, which would be. I think an extraordinary. Event, considering you guys aren't elected and we are. So that, that is a very, very serious thing to override, you know, what the town council says. Um, but with that said. But for example, in this document, it talks about uh, exploring a potential additional fire station. I mean, that would cost. Millions, probably, I mean, the, the police building is gonna be about twenty-eight million dollars, a firehouse, let's say it would be at least a twenty-million-dollar project. You know, things of that nature, right? And I get it, I, I understand, this is not a mandate, there'll be discussions and other bodies have to consider that, but. The process to me seems cankered. Because how could you not? Consider, and you, you, you're not supposed to, I'm just saying kind of rhetorically or, or generally when I say you. How could the town's. Planning and zoning commission. Develop a, uh, this major, major, hyper impactful plan for the next ten years. Um, and not consider what the cost is to comply with a mandate of at least get the plan together. And I think for people, are, you know, taxpayers. People who live in the town to understand, look, we have to man, we have to comply with these laws, we've got to put the plan together, we're not saying you have to spend a single dime, we're just saying. Here's what you need to look at, I think for the town. It's important, I mean, moving forward in the next iteration, the decade from now. That the P and Z actually has to engage a consultant and say. During your very extensive vetting process, start working through what a, the potential cost is to the town. If it were to implement. The items in here, you know, that, that's my concern, because I'm looking at this, saying, you know, you're talking about a fire department, you're talking about all these different. Studies that have to get underway, I'm just seeing massive dollar signs, and. Again, this has nothing to do with planning and zoning, you've, you've fulfilled your mandate, you've done what you're supposed to do, but it, my comment here is, I think, this is just a problematic document. Fundamentally, because we don't know what this cost is over the long haul, what this could mean for the town. Um, but that's what our process is now, and we'll have to take a vote on, on, on this and, and move it along. But it's really, it's very troubling to me that how, how can we ask you guys to put something together that's so important? And we really just wouldn't know, we just have no idea what the potential cost of these items are. Whether it's gonna be punted out or whatever, to me, this is like, i- 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 this is a, a, a major, major budget item for us to discuss, so. With that said, I'm really not interested in, in, in having a large discussion, in fact, I'm just gonna shut it down there, I, because again, it's not attacking you, I think you've done your job admirably, you've done exactly what you were supposed to do. You stayed within your, your, your lane, um, and I, I don't need a response on that, my, my comment was really more for the general public to say. This is a big document, but planning and zoning and the P O C does not get into cost, I think. Uh, the cost needs to be addressed, and maybe we look at this process over the long haul and how to. Kind of marry this issue of a cost analysis, have consultants along for the ride to help us out as we move forward, so. But if you wanna give.
Yeah, just give you thirty seconds on a response here. Uh, again, this document is, as everyone's been saying tonight, aspirational, right, it's a, it's a guideline, um, nothing is mandated by it. Um, but that's why we're here talking to you, looking for your input. Um, you as the representatives, as the elected representatives for the townspeople, if there are elements to this. Mainly because we're not gonna be able to nail down costs, that, that would be an incredibly difficult process to try and. Get someone, a consultant to come in here and try and associate costs with these very high-level recommendations. There's not enough detail in here to put costs into things. Any, any budgeting consultant will tell you that. But you as a town council, if there are elements to the uh, to the planning, conservation and development that. You foresee as never being a potential possibility in town. Because of potential cost implication, not because of a sidewalk study, but to your point, a fire station, a second fire station, if you think that's completely unfeasible. And, and would never happen in this town, we'd like that feedback. We, we can, we can adjust and modify the document to reflect your feedback. Um, that's part of the process.
Right, no, I appreciate that, John, if you wanna.
Yeah, I would also note, I mean, you have a five-year capital plan, right?
Yeah.
It's aspirational. You know, it's one of those, think of your own house and your family, your own P O C D for your family, it's, you know, honey, we need a new roof in a couple of years. The car's nine years old, we gotta send the kids to college, okay, let's pick what we're gonna do. And you have to make adjustments along the way, depending on revenue, depending on other issues that just. Come out of left field and hit you that no one played, no one planned for, you have to make these adjustments. Fair enough, I mean, it's similar to this. Again, no one's required to do anything, these are the things to think about, these are ideas to reflect on. So that uh, you have some, we, we hope um. Thoughtful things to chew on and when doing planning. And which provides feedback from uh, the townspeople, which was, I think, pretty diligent. And so these types of trade-offs are really what you all are not being paid to do. Uh, and so does similar for the selectmen and the board of finance, and to the extent, and, and property is the board of education, too. And so uh, it's simply, no one's required to do anything, these are ideas that we think are useful. Exactly how to precisely pre- prioritize the one hundred and eighty odd entities. Given other priorities, given things that appear later on, again. Uh, those are budget decisions that you all need to make, and we respect that and support that. So it's food for thought.
I appreciate that, and, and I would just say, I, I do disagree with you, I think there's, there's an ability to. Ballpark estimate of what type of cost that we were looking at, I mean, I am looking at, I looked at five or six different things, I'm like, well, if we actually did this. If we did expand these sidewalks, if we did do a fire department, if, you know, we did, you know. Upgrade uh, uh, some monitoring and some other issues with the board of that, that are, like, I'm like, okay, well, well, we thought about doing that, current prices are X, so at least it would give us. There, there is an ability to do that, we're very high level and be subject to a lot of offsets and other considerations, but. Nevertheless, guys, I appreciate it, again, that is no knock on you, you've done an admirable job, I'm, it's just, it's a process that you've, you followed, you did what you needed to do, I just think that there needs, needs to be a little bit of a. A readjustment and recalibration of, of how P and Z moves forward in the future, but you've done exactly what you were supposed to do, so. With that said, I'm gonna close it down, we get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Alright, great, thank you, everybody, thank you, guys.